Board members to attend and show their support for the volunteers that we have. It'll be a great evening and our expectations will be going up in the next couple more.
Okay, it is better than our last two years. It's awesome.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, planning commission, there was no report against no meeting last time, right?
There, there was a meeting.
Okay.
Uh, real short, uh, um, we had a resignation by Jim Dubrow and we were looking to have a
Really?
Thank you note to him for his 12 years of service.
Why did he resign?
What?
Why did he resign?
Uh, he's said he's had enough time in there and thought that he would make room for new people.
You need to advertise everything for a local position there on the website and Facebook. Sorry, continue Mr. Carr.
Um, we did have, uh, we kinda, it was almost canceled. The PA Water, Brian Hessinger and his people were afraid of all the snow and ice, which was pretty bad. And they had quite a ways to go up to Berks County, so they kinda bailed at about 3:30. Uh, didn't blame them too much on that one, but we did go with, uh, SERPA also went further with the fluoridation, uh, issues for, uh, being a neurotoxin in the public water. And they gave us some of the guidelines to go through that process with other townships. We got the list from them in regards to contact people in each of the different townships. Uh, I might send that forward to, and then how, how to go about that through the DEP. Uh, so that'll be an ongoing process. I'm sure it's not gonna
Okay.
Be a one-off type thing. And, uh, PA Water also, uh, in the future, we're trying to set up a tour for their facilities, uh, to look at the facilities, see where your water's coming from and what some of their processes are. So, about that, a lot of people seem to be pretty interested in
Yeah.
Going and seeing that.
When you get that, please forward it to us. See if any of us can get out as well.
Yeah, that was it. Thank you.
Now, you said you were looking for, uh, something for Mr. Dubrow about his service like we did with the parking rec people, I'm assuming?
Yeah, that'd be nice.
I'll be fine with that. We can now for parking rec for all their services. So, Dubrow did 12 years, anybody?
He was a former chair too, so.
Any issues with that? Okay, so we can do something similar around. Historical commission, there was no report. Mr. Rhodes, did you want to speak to us anything?
Yeah, uh, we do have a, a meeting, but at one of the farms, just like the fans, which didn't have it's in reference to the Coke box, uh, the bridge, Pinkman Bridge
Right.
In Fox Farm. It's been down, it's been, I talked to Ann Deneman and the other contractors down there. It's been, should be operational by springtime, you know, hopefully they get everything. But actually, it's gonna keep the historical aspect. A lot of people thought it wasn't going to. But it is. Some of the beams and stuff had to be replaced and they're gonna replace them with some beams that resemble that time when it was, uh, done. Also the fact, just for the residents know, we have three covered bridges in East Fallfield. Two of them aren't operating properly. Actually, it's owned by very genuine conservative. There's 15 bridges in the county, three of them are in East Fallfield. In reference to, uh, two other items that are very concerned of the historical mission. One is out on, uh, Strolfberg Road in Mount Palmer, his old schoolhouse. Uh, we have the zoning officer out there that ceased to operate, you know, the gentleman did start doing it, came to us and evidently it's not being done, so the zoning officer's involved in it. Also with Mortonville, uh, right across that old bar, Marty's, it used to be Marty's. There's a major demolition being done on that building that we gave permission for some things, but evidently the person that owns it now is doing major demolition on the side. You can see it there. So, that's another item that we're gonna address for us historically. But one other item I would like to bring up is for the board to look into. Uh, Joe, who's a very good chairman, uh, has sent in a, a grant into the township. We were supposed to get a grant for Mortonville Bridge for the face to be something like East Rapid. You can go to East Rapid and see it has a stone face. We have the bearing. So, we had a, one of the, Historic Commission is very good. He's an architect. He's also a designer. He presented one to the Historical Society. They approved it. They were gonna get a grant. They, uh, he passed it on to the administration here and some, somehow the grant didn't get there, so we'll have to reply next year for the grant for the money. The state does have a grant for historical sites and we did present that grant. So, um, it's a little, it's like water over the dam, but when the grants, that's what's very important. And I want all the supervisors to, I know it's a financial thing, but, uh, there's not too many people who know how to do their grants. And that's where a township manager does come in and they know. And just like the one gentleman said, you'll save more money. All right? So, that's something that, as a historical, we also have problems for putting our, I have pictures here tonight that anybody wants to see of our township and we wanted that to be on the website. So, everybody would see about the township and we presented pictures. I don't know where, and this is not what you, you know, you can, you know, on all you want, but in reference, because we changed so many secretaries and stuff, they got lost in the shuffle. All right? It's no big thing, but putting things like the historical site on East Fallfield. This is going on western part of the township, the eastern part. We have a lot of historical sites and we have a lot of photos that we wanted to be on the website so the residents could see these places and benefit from it. And I'm gonna tell you right now, when you leave tonight to go to your development, there's a gentleman that we gave right across the street here, Old Beck Development, basically a part of the Beck property. That guy put a beautiful addition on to that and kept it historical. We're gonna try and do something with the Historical Society to recommend what a great job that place looked like. Before that, it was been down, basically bordered up. Nobody lived there. It was one of them vacant houses. So, now if you go there and you see the donkeys out there and stuff, you look at that house and that's a great, what the Historical Society are doing, working with residents to want quick addition and picks up there. Let's still keep the historical of the building. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Uh, parking rec, no report. Again, we said it earlier, but you know, all those positions are vacant on that committee, so anyway, I know we've had a few step forward resumes, hopefully we can get some more.
I've never heard back from them too. I've tried to contact them, it's just on.
Okay. All right, on to the treasures report. Make a motion to approve the January 31st, 2016 treasures report as presented.
Second.
Questions or comments? Yeah. My first one's, I do like the new format for some of this information, so thank you.
Honey, what's going on with the insurance liability between the different departments? Like 1406 dot 60, 1411 dot 60, and then the last one is 1431 dot 60. Why is there a difference in the percentage?
I've been working with our insurance company to actually break up the allocations better. On one of the, I think it was on the permit application, there's like a line item for public officials liability. Um, previously, or, um, prior sector, or treasures, I'm not quite sure how they figured out the allocations, but I've been pointing them directly towards where it should go. So, anything related to township supervisors falls under administration. So, the $7,000 or the $8,000 charge just for that liability insurance for the year, I put under administration where it belongs instead of charging it to the road crew or police. I'm trying to make sure that things are pointed and shown in the correct spots so that the numbers are gonna look all on that.
How about with the, the Public Works Department and the Police Department? Why is there a difference? Like, if they're on the same, what's going on with the insurance liability between the two of those? Why is 104, 104% greater than 63%, I mean, or 63% of the budget and 104% of the budget?
You're looking at
1411 dot 60 and then 1431 about 60. Is that because of, if we're with the same?
For 1431 60, we put more towards it, um, more towards that liability. So, that's why it's showing at 104% of it, whereas with the Police Department, it's showing only 63% of what we allocated for it because part of the public officials liability, I think really was sitting under the Police Department and showing an expense, more liability for them than it's not the liability. Does that make more sense or?
So, the total liability insurance is roughly the same, roughly what we budgeted?
Yes, I believe so.
Get a calculation of that, I guess. So, it's just spreading it out to a proper account and stuff.
Yes.
Okay, so that's why the numbers are off. And because eyeballing it, it looks like it would be roughly around, won't be budgeted for total.
Yeah.
Okay. You wanna hear that number or you wouldn't read that number later?
Yeah, I'm working on.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? This is Scott.
Yeah, do I all, or do you consider the treasures report the payment, the payment cost or the payment authorization?
That's a separate motion that'll come next.
Okay, fine, good idea. Alrighty, my question is then regarding the accounting. Uh, where is the police, uh, legal account number? Say for instance, like the negotiations for the police contract, I would think would go under that.
Um, there is not specifically a legal line item for each different department. However, I am tracking separately based on the new breakdowns that, um, Santa Bell War has. I'm keeping different, um, account numbers. So, general matters falls as one, police falls as another. Um, if that's something the board would like added to the new, um, legal sheet, I can add in additional items.
There's no negotiations going on currently with the police, so
Correct.
It's a, it's a moot point.
Well, it's a hidden coin.
It's not hidden, there's nothing going on.
Well, uh, it should, when you base, uh, sometimes when you say actual for the previous year, yeah, I always wanted to know how
There was no negotiations last year either.
Well, I always had questioned what that cost was and I was never told.
It's zero.
Okay, Joe.
Consider yourself informed.
Well, that's a, that's a little bit off the top, Mr. Chairman. You know, somebody takes a personal, yeah.
I am an accountant and a tax accountant.
It's an answer.
So, it's not a good answer. It's a wisecrack answer. All right, and then secondly, I'd like to, uh, the state police fines are spelled out. Where are the township fines? The township police income fines?
We don't receive fines here. It goes to this data. I don't, I don't know. We don't ever come to
Yes, we do. You get a cost.
I'll just on the administration part of it. Are there, should I be?
It would probably go under violation of ordinances and statutes, vehicle code violations or ordinance violations.
What number is that?
Uh, 1331.1 is vehicle code violations. 1331.2 is violation of ordinance and statutes.
13.
It should be on page four. That's okay.
Okay, vehicle code violation, alrighty. So, actual, oh, you don't have last year's. Okay, alrighty, good. All right, I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we on the C?
Yes, Poni.
Um, in terms of the insurance liability, we had budgeted 30, or 33,686 and it came in at 34,841. So, it's about a thousand, $155 difference was under budgeted.
Thank you. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries for zero. I make a motion to approve the January 2016 payment authorizations as presented.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Oh, I had a question.
Okay, this is Scott.
Oh, the Weaver Mall subcontractor snow plow. I don't know that. So, was that an emergency situation or what? Since we have so many, you know, because at the January organization meeting, I don't, I mean, if you had named a person of Weaver Mall, is he an employee? I don't know. I just questioned
Which check?
Uh, Weaver Mall check 6155, removal, snow plowing subcontractor $6,000, $6,603.71.
I think it's referring to the rental of the snow plow during Storm Jonas where we were under a state of emergency.
Okay.
What was that? I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
It was from Storm Jonas, um, when we were under a state of emergency. We ended up, uh, some contracting for, or, or reaching out for a front end loader to assist in snow removal.
Were you that was aware of that?
Yeah, yeah, it was a front end loader we used.
All right, thank you.
I like that because it was an emergency and in reference to the amount of money, you know, for the particular loader within that, and a lot of the, I just say, I was out there and there's a lot of snow. It don't matter with the trucks. Sometimes the trucks couldn't get through there. You have to use loaders with the clouds and stuff like that. And, uh, and I could just say, a lot of that there, you might be able to put in and get reimbursed for that, you know, the contractor that you hired to come in there. There's a possibility that the township looks into that. You should be able to get it reimbursed because it was an emergency. Nobody was supposed to be on the road. There's a lot of, we all know, it's a lot of snow. So, that's something that, that the township board supervisors should look at and see that we can get it reimbursed for some of the hours and also the outside equipment that we had to use.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to come in.
Yeah.
I just want to thank Poni for doing an outstanding job as far as you, what you're talking about as far as the state emergency. She made time to fill out some of those papers out that we had to sit, me and her sit down. Because usually turn his turn and he usually helps us out, but he has problems at home and stuff. And so, we did take time and she did a great job and it was a lot of work. So, hopefully we'll get reimbursed for a lot of that.
Thank you both. This is Scott.
Is that the same thing for the Green Valley Farms? That was like over 33,500?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's a big amount. That's almost $10,000. So, somebody, you know, it would have been good to think about that. If it's an emergency, federal emergency and there are funds out there.
Yeah, that's what, that's what he's talking about. They were looking into.
All right.
Okay. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
I'm gonna nail that.
Motion carries 3-1, we want. Um, other business, can I request a general hopefully?
Okay.
Pico Greenway Grant.
Um, I spoke with the previous, um, parking record recreation committee. Um, they said, given the current circumstances, the former parking rec members feel it would be difficult to proceed with the Pico grant at this time or to accomplish a final product that would be implemented. It would also likely now require much more volunteer time and effort than was originally anticipated. Former parking rec members recommended the Pico grant be canceled so that the township can focus on its more pressing issues. Um, if that's something that the board agrees with, they would need to motion please to cancel the grant for the Pico Greenway project and return.
This was the trail system, right?
No, this is for, um, I think it was for a vegetation management guide.
Oh, okay.
This is vegetation management.
This wasn't the several hundred thousand?
No, that one we've already canceled.
Okay. All right, yeah, I mean, we don't have anybody to follow it through, so. That's fine, I'll make that motion. To, what, did we already apply for it?
We, we have a check in the state.
Oh, okay, so you need to make a motion to
Cancel the grant.
Cancel the grant.
Return the fund.
Make a motion to cancel the Pico Greenway grant, um, application and return the funds already received. Second. Questions or comments? This is Scott.
How much are you gonna return?
It's $8,500.
$8,500.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Carries 4-0. Scary cameras, do you have an update on that?
Um, I looked at what Poni sent last time. I mean, it's up to the board. I mean, um, I looked at the security cameras. Again, they were turned off for years. Turned back on. The, uh, the, I think the, the screen monitor is dead in there. Um, board has to basically look at what, um, chief porter sent to Poni and think about putting in a, a system like that. You only have three, three, uh, four coaxial cables going to that. So, the eight monitor system that Poni had sent to the board, you're gonna have to run four more wires. So, you might wanna look at someone to install it or, or someone here wants to do it. Uh, I looked at the old system, so I don't really have time to, to look at that stuff. So, if the board wants to hire someone or go with whoever chief porter had or whatever.
I did my own.
He did his own.
Yeah, how much work did it, how much work would that be of volunteers put?
What?
Four, five more cameras up.
I think we have three.
Depends if you buy the eight.
Three, good.
If three are good, depends what you're focusing the cameras on.
We'll go from there. We'll get to something.
Okay, we developed, yeah, let's get that plan developed. What cost will be including labor? And where, what, where they're gonna be pointing position. Township newsletter?
Um, is that something that we as a, well, no, I apologize, not we, you as a board are interested in doing? Um, we've had residents ask at different points about the state of the newsletter. I didn't know if it's the desire of the board to actually put out a newsletter and if so, how often would they like to?
I think it would be helpful. I mean, we talked off and on last year about it, the year before, I guess. Um, did have somebody come forward to help with it, but we never got anywhere.
Very.
I mean, it's, it'd be, yeah, it'd be great to get more out there, uh, but you know, it's gonna be the costs associated with it. And I mean, how often? Maybe quarterly, maybe six months, maybe, I don't know. I mean, it depends on, you know, we have all the different events, so it's a good spot for, you know, Park Day, for that, uh, fire camera that had at the end of April, obviously probably won't be in touch with that. But, uh, in the future, moving forward with that, I'm fine with it, but you know, we need to, to see what the costs are truly gonna be to mail out to everybody.
There's two different options. Um, one, um, someone from Hometown Press reached out to us. They print and produce custom full color newsletters. They will supposedly help write the articles. They do professional typeset and editorialize the text, include color photos, match charts, and they print and deliver the finished full color newsletter to us at no cost. The newsletter is funded through community advertising, which they organize and set up. So, basically the mailing cost, the cost to stick on labels and, um, stamps and then the cost of the stamps themselves would be what is left. Uh, the other option is Michael Green. I know one of our residents has offered to put together a newsletter for us. However, he would need us to provide content. Um, I believe either direction, they're still going to need some guidance in terms of content. Um, with the aid of Kathy, Lisa and myself, we could technically put together content and provide to him. Um, that would leave the office, however, needing to contact local businesses such as like some of our birthday sponsors to see if they would like to advertise and then use the advertising money to cover the entire cost of the newsletter, including the mailing and postage. Uh, currently this year, we do have $2,000 budgeted for newsletter. Uh, postage alone for one mailing is around $1,360. I'm saying it's a 49 cent stamp, depending on how many pages the newsletter is.
This is the Hometown Press here that you have in our back there?
Mm-hmm, yes.
So, West Oceans use them.
There's, I actually got to be making something. Um, we have East Ocean, Rock Hill Township, Honey Brook Borough, Plainfield Township and Marytown County. Those are the four that you mailed, or mailed.
Yeah, I'd like to take a look at them later. See. Yeah, you know, advertising to pay for, it's a good idea, I guess, if you can get it out more often than. Um, anybody else's thoughts? It looks good, I mean, you know, especially if it's, if it's full fund, you're advertising. That's, uh, certainly better than.
It would mean, if we went for Hometown Press, it, the cost of the newsletter would be free to us, but we would have to cover the mailing cost.
Okay. Okay. He said that's 1,300?
It's roughly around $1,350, roughly, if we took our
For this kind of newsletter?
I'm not sure how many pages, like, I don't know if it would be more like a 65 cent stamp. I would have to speak with someone.
Might be worth that one, that, see what we can do. But I'd be fine with trying to get one out. We go, I mean, is there a contract with them or is it, can we just try one and see how it goes and then go from there with them?
I can find out.
Yeah, do they provide like a, uh, electronic version of it?
They do provide a PDF version that you can email out or put up on the website.
Okay, that'd be great, too. All right, cool.
Okay, so find out if we can, if it's something that we can try or if it's a contract or?
Yeah, what the deal with that is. I mean, we'll have to see what type of content they suggest. I mean, we would obviously have to come up with some stuff too, so.
Individual departments.
Yeah, individual departments can, things of that nature. Okay, quick books?
Um, I emailed the board on Wednesday, February 7th, Intuit and QuickBooks had a President's Day sale. I ended up taking advantage of their 50% off sale and got the two licenses for QuickBooks for $605. Um, I paid for it using the credit card. It was technically something that was budgeted, um, but it saved us almost $400 if we had bought the licenses outright. Um, this will allow Kathy and I to be able to be in QuickBooks at the same time. Uh, right now, especially at the beginning of the year, she's processing between 10 or $20,000 of trash payments at a time and I have the audits starting up, so we need to be able to do that.
Escrow accounts?
Uh, escrow. Um, I need to open up a new escrow account for Lot 34, 140 Cypress Hill for the Manchester Farms Development and eventually one, I will not need to be open for Ridge Press. Is that right, Mike?
That's correct. They open it themselves, developer does with WSFS.
Okay. Um, Mike has actually suggested keeping separate bank accounts for each escrow as they start. Um, that's different than what we've been typically doing. We have one master escrow account. When someone puts in escrow money, it's put into the master account and then an entry is made to show that as received in. Um, there's pros and cons for doing both of it. Some of the issues with it is just it becomes a multitude of bank accounts. We'll need checks for all those bank accounts. Um, they tried to tell me it would be $40 for 50 bank checks, so I told them no because that would be a cost for the, um, developer, whoever did it. Um, currently, all the money is merged. We pay bills when they come in and then we get reimbursed by the escrow holder. It sounds like from a prior conversation, I should be waiting for the funds to come in first from the specific escrow account and then pay that specific bill?
I think Jamie was speaking about his bills under the Miss Gallo's Planet Code for, um, from the developer, for the developer.
Say that, no, I'm sorry, Mike.
That was Jamie speaking about his bills that are pass-through bills
Yes.
Under the Miss Gallo's Planet Code.
Okay, technically, we haven't been having them as pass-through bills. The bills come in, we pay the bills. We bill, like, Manchester Farms or we bill Ridge Press or we bill Hume Ether and then we get reimbursed at the end. Should I be waiting?
Okay, you should be reimbursed on a rolling basis from the developers, not at the end of development.
Yes, okay. I'm just, I'm questioning the technicality when we're actually supposed to pay the legal and engineering bills, whether I'm supposed to wait for the check to come in for the actual invoice or whether we just continue to pay out the invoices and wait for reimbursement.
Well, I, I think a lot of them, this is what Well, I, I think a lot of them, this is what we're just gonna create an issue with, the accounting for the escrow account we have, the developer's already submitted an upfront escrow to secure against, in part, the professional consultant review fees, um, and so that, that's your, your backstop against payment for any of those funds that are out there. You should, once you get the bill, and you should transmit it over to the developer.
Okay, all right. Um.